October 9th at 6:00 p.m. With the calling of this, we'll have some general discussion. Pretty much the way the agenda will go after that. About 6:30 we'll give or take, we'll float into that. Actually, at 6:30, since it's posted that way. We will stop and have a special meeting, and then we will resume the caucus meeting after that. I have just a few things that I want to touch base on, and then we'll go around the table, because some of these items that are on here for the caucus meeting might take us longer than a half hour. So, I will go through, and if somebody else has something they want to throw out, add to, please, feel free to. Mary, why don't we do that? Why don't we go around the table? I'll go last. Amy, do you have anything that you need to bring up or talk about? Holly?
And what is this story covering to?
Just in general discussion for caucus. We have several items that we'll talk about. Is there anything kind of short-lived that you want to bring up?
Besides the fact that I'm against the...
We're going to talk about that in the special meeting, so yeah. We'll get back to that.
Now, I did have a good call today about the ball field and the scheduling. I had Mr. Bell, Chris Bell, call me, and he's going to help him and a couple of coaches set up our master schedule up and start earlier, so we get more of the kids playing back on our fields instead of them having to leave the city to go. So, we would be hosting more games, and they would even pay us to play.
What organization is it?
He's just a coach. He's got two leagues.
He's in Southwest teams, you know, Cross Town team.
Okay. Just didn't know if it's a little league, you know, there's so many different...
Not whole and select.
Not whole, little league.
It's not whole and one, it's one not whole team and one select team.
Okay. That's positive. That's good to hear.
So, they're going to come to the rec committee and...
Start touching base with this and then get started.
That was the first one I heard that they would pay to play. So, I thought that was good.
Yeah. Not that we are going to ask it, we'll just have to wait and see what they want first before we ask them to pay, because we've never asked people to pay. But if we're bringing kids from all over the tri-state, maybe we would look at...
Well, it's not a lot. I mean, it'd be a little per game, you know, to help out, if it helped out.
Help out with the expenses.
Yeah.
We'll see. Yep, we'll sit down, let the rec, sit down, put through all the details first and see what they're looking for. Because traditionally, we don't want to really, if at all possible, charge for activities with kids, if possible.
And that grant you sent me?
Yep.
For the trails, Amy has agreed to help me. And then with the safety grant also, Amy said that she would help with any of the grants. So, I told her about some of the stuff I wanted that Kentucky League of Cities with the economic development and all the grants, so.
Yep, and I don't know if you guys are receiving, just to touch base. I tried depending upon what the topic was, but I get emails a lot. I mean, you guys do too. KLC, I get one or two a day sometimes. And like this one had grants on it. Well, something, I saw the topic about trails, so I read through it a little bit, and even it even talked about maintaining the trails. I don't know if we can pull it off or not, but they have a trail over here. It's in a nonprofit organization, so I thought, maybe we can have our rec committee look into that to see if they can't come up with a grant to help us maintain it. So, I started forwarding those on to the chairpersons of those different areas to try and see if we can come up with more money that's available, just so people know.
I printed those off the website, two guys all one copy. The West, the one for Bell, Kentucky League of Cities Insurance.
All right. Thank you.
Is that one you took from that?
Yeah, and that's where, yeah.
And Amy definitely.
But again, definitely money available, to say the least. We just have to go out and try and acquire it, so. We will help in the office if we need, Amy, if you're writing one, or Jim, or whoever, Rod, we will do our best to help inside as well.
Okay.
So, again, we'll take whatever money they want to give us, so. That's positive, definitely. Anything else?
Before you leave, Molly, do you have any idea how many teams we still have in Villa Hills? How many baseball teams that use our field? We used to do that just by wherever the coach lives, so, you know, how many coaches we had in Villa Hills. Just curious, is that, I don't know if it's gone up or down, I don't know.
And not whole, it's definitely down. Kind of a slower migration to Southwest at much younger ages, so.
Southwest and select?
Yeah. Yeah. Now, Cross Town had a pretty good first year last year, and interest is high for those that want to play not whole versus select, but I still see the numbers here, they aren't significantly from where they used to be.
Select typically come from all over the area.
Yeah.
Right.
So, we're going to try to bring more teams back in here. He was saying that basically it was the reason why a lot of them weren't here is because when we drew for the teams, or the meeting that was set up, it was usually in February, that was too late, because they had already had, fields had already been drawn for in other areas, so.
In February?
The Southwest teams are, have to commit by December to where they're practicing, so.
And I was just modeling past, you know...
Right, no, but I think that, I thought we'd already, Mr. Ringo, I thought February was a pretty good time when the fields were always drawn for down here.
Garrett's a pre-schedule.
AAU ball is always in December, and we always had an arrangement where Garrett would work with the teams in advance in December and pretty much allocate field space.
After that?
No, not really. Then in Jan, in February, we did the Dixie and Out Hole with local teams and allocated all the remaining space, but we worked with the AAU teams so that they could get their schedules done.
Okay. So, okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Holly, do you have anything else for now? Okay. Okay. Rod, you have anything?
In terms of business, it would pretty much be what's on the special meeting agenda for tonight. Just would like to tell everybody that's here tonight, this Sunday, Fire Department, open house, afternoon, 1 to 5, right, George? Something like that, 1 to 5. 85th anniversary celebrations, firehouse, lots of good stuff going on up there. Please try to come up at some point and visit with the firemen. The new ambulance is here in service, and the department wants to show it off, so.
Kids, I think they allow, kids things.
Kids, right, yeah.
A lot of things for the kids to do.
For you guys, I'd email, forward you the email, there's some special things in the morning for the officials.
Yep.
I'm trying, trying. Church.
Just to call this off.
Yep.
August financial statements, do we know?
I'll come back to that. Good point. That's one of the things I have those, but then I'll come back to, yes.
Do we have that legal spreadsheet yet? Okay.
Tell me this.
Where are we on the website?
I don't know. I were a worm a couple of months ago, since I spend more time in Cincinnati than other parts of the country. We're going to work on it.
And Craig's been working on it, he's...
Craig's got a big piece of it, and he's been doing his part, but I personally have not been able to touch any of it either.
If there's anything else we can help with from your side, let us know.
I'll look at it again.
I know it's been crazy, so definitely understand that.
We're going to need some help with the neighborhood watch program, Craig. And Summer Berger is adding that up to the safety committee, so if you wouldn't mind, we'll have her forward some information to you, see if we can get that on the website.
Sure. Probably done the present one, and then flip it to the new one as well.
That's fine. Personnel, man, are we going to talk about that tonight?
Okay.
Cruiser, has that been ordered?
I emailed Dan today, telling him that we would order it this week if we can.
Okay. I saw the posting for the new officer. Can we talk anymore about that, or do we need to go to executive session to talk about hiring of a new officer? Now, what I'm concerned about is the resumes that we had versus the resumes we're going to get.
I don't know the answer.
I'll tell you about, I'll come back to that.
Okay.
Amnesty, where are we on amnesty? Are you going to talk about that also?
Yep, thank you. Got the spreadsheet ready?
Have you got TBNK committed to November and December caucus meetings?
Yes. I will confirm, but I thought they said yes. Okay. Craig is saying yes, so.
Okay. I found out this evening that I may be in violation of the open meetings law by moving the finance meeting. Apparently, we did an ordinance setting the date and time, and we moved it to make it more convenient for Cordelia, because we moved our general meeting. And I may have inadvertently walked into something that I didn't intend to. So, if we have an ordinance, do we have to change the ordinance?
If we have an ordinance that relists committee times, then that ordinance for date to be changed. If we only have an ordinance that lists our caucus and, caucus regular council meeting times, I would recommend we consider doing an ordinance to set committee times.
I would recommend against it. I think that as long as we state and publicize them like we've done in the past, that way, if we have to change them, we're not changing ordinances.
But I haven't published the agenda.
Right.
I give out the agenda, but I haven't published it.
Correct.
I don't, I mean, I just want to find a way to fix this.
What we'll do is we'll do some homework to find out if it's in an ordinance or not, Jim. Typically, when we set our meeting schedules, they've never been in an ordinance in the number of years that I've been around. I don't, I mean, I look up, I see some of the other guys here. I don't think we ever put our regular meetings...
You have a set, if you even say in council that you have a set meeting date, that becomes the meeting date that you have to change by notice to the public.
Right, but not necessarily in an ordinance form.
Well, I don't, I don't remember which, I don't know what you've got. If you've got an ordinance, you have a serious written issue.
But we never put them in an ordinance form in the past. Did we, we just publicly announced it?
We publicly announced it, but if you change it, then you are violating.
Unless we publicly announced it.
Unless you publicly announce it.
Right. So, we just have to confirm if it's in an ordinance form or not.
I'm going to send you an agenda for the next meeting, and I want it published, just in case.
As a special meeting for...
Why don't we do this? I mean, why don't we just figure out whether we have to do it, post it off, and, because it's a, it's a committee.
Right.
It's not, it's not the council. Just let me just confirm that you have to do it, and I'll let you know.
And for the record, the committee schedule is posted on the website on the calendar, so it is already out there for the date that...
Right, we discussed it in a council meeting, but if the ordinance supersedes a council meeting, I just, I don't want to go to jail.
We don't want to violate if we don't have it.
Audit report, did we get that back from Van Gorder Walker? Yeah?
We have not.
Okay. Would you mind if I called in to find out where we are?
That would be great. That would be fun, Jim, thanks.
And that's all I had, other than the obvious topics for tonight.
Okay, so we have, Brian, we're just roundtable, because we have about 15 minutes for the special meeting. Do you have anything generally that you want to talk about that won't take a whole long time?
The only thing that was kind of hot and heavy on the line was, what's everybody's thoughts about the salt garage? Apparently, we're paying like $700 a month to rent it in Crescent Springs. Is that something that we would be entrusted in building our own, or not really?
I think what, I'll speak out and say, I'd be interested in seeing what the costs are. I mean, if you're going to tell me it's $100,000 to build one, I'd probably say not. If you're going to tell me we can figure out how to build one for $40,000 and it's within so many years, five years, six years, and it's pay for itself, I'd consider it, but, I mean, that's me.
I think the numbers I heard was around 80, and it'll take us about 10 years to pay it off, and we own it forever.
I don't know, but there are other options for public works, period. I mean, we've talked about that before, going outside the city, talking to Crescent Springs. I mean, I think that's an open discussion in general, I mean, I'm not...
Well, it plants a seed, and then at least we can take it from there, and then, if anything, you know what I mean? Just...
Yeah, I just wouldn't want it out here. I mean, I think it's get congested, it's already got all these weeds, and then depending on the shape or form of it, I mean...
Yep.
Down on the river somewhere, I mean...
It's definitely cost savings over time, that's for sure.
I mean, we're going to get the salt till, I mean, forever.
Yep.
Well, is everybody opposed to talking to Crescent Springs about something like this? I mean, I realize there've been some problems in the past, but the past is the past, but they already have the salt garage.
It's already there.
And, you know, I don't know why you couldn't share the cost of that.
Well, I guess there was some dispute at some point, where a truckload of salt has got the Hatfields and McCoys apparently going, saying, I don't know why we can't sit down and talk about that. Like you said, we built a salt garage here, there's one a mile away. It's already there. It's ludicrous to spend that kind of money, but we ought to be able to work something out with our neighbor.
Share a party, pardon me.
We call it the Crescentville Assault Authority. There you go.
So, I guess that answers your question, Jim. Yes, I think it sounds like everyone's open to at least seeing if we can come up with something. Okay.
Michael, is I supposed to talk about that?
You can't, the caucus come out of that. I'm going to fire through a few of the things for Jim, real quick, that Jim has mentioned, not for Jim, but Jim has mentioned. First of all, took a first crack at a spreadsheet for legal bills that we talked about at the council meeting, one of the things that I think will help everybody get a better comfort value. It is what it is, but on the legal bills, just having a spreadsheet. And I shouldn't say I did, I was actually going to do this, but it was offered to have it done, so I gave, I offered the layout, and Craig and Sue took it as. And this can be modified, however, I mean, it's just on an Excel spreadsheet, and I'm not sure if this is exactly what you're looking for, Jim, or not. This is what I kind of asked them to put together in this type of format. Is this something that you're kind of thinking about, just off the 30 seconds of a roll, Jim?
Why don't we start, why can't we choose September 15th as the starting date instead of the fiscal, beginning of fiscal year?
It's as of, those are the bills that are rolled through.
That's what we get.
Those are the bills.
That's from July 1st, so we're correct, so we have now two weeks left.
How difficult is this to do, Craig?
Having to do all of them, probably about 45 minutes, but once they come, start coming in, five minutes.
I'm going to ask that we do this every month.
Well, I would like for the bottom to tie up to the financial statement, and then we would have a good idea of what's happening, so I don't know how difficult that is for you to do, but if we could do that, that would be very helpful.
You're talking about the bottom right corner.
Correct.
Okay. What generally falls into the category of other, that accounts for about 10%?
Everything else that didn't fall into any of those other lines, like conversations, actually, Sue did most of that section, so I'd have to ask her what she put into there. But following up, follow-ups, I just, I mean, I understand I can catch all the categories that are small amounts, but that's 10% of the...
Here's some of the legal bills I requested. This is going to tell us some of the items that are...
We can ask her, if she can remember which ones she put in there, because there's going to be different items that come up, because there's just, there's a wide variety of topics that come across them. Good start, Jim, do you, if anybody looks us over over the next several weeks, or whenever, and sees that they'd like to see something a little bit different, please feel free.
This is a nice breakdown.
My office has requested a legal bill, a DBL.
Can you tell me, mayor, the delinquencies, are they, is that only on vehicle license fee, or is that all?
No, that's foreclosures, vehicles, and eventually, property.
Yeah, because some of these things are pretty wild when it comes to delinquencies. We receive notices of, um, delinquencies slash...
Bankruptcies.
Bankruptcies, as well as foreclosures. And sometimes, it's actually not even including the city. It's somebody suing a resident because they didn't get their, I mean, garage built, but yet they named the city as part of it because of the property taxes, and we still have to, you know, anything like that that comes in, we forward it on to the council, because we have to make sure it's covered, to say the least, but... Good start, Jim, is that kind of...
Because what, what is retainer?
That says monthly, monthly retainer.
I understand, I understand what that is, but...
What's included in a retainer?
Well, yeah, what would be the services rendered under the retainer line?
Repairing at two meetings, you know, generally answering a lot of emails and phone calls, particularly with the mayor. I generally don't have a bill for any emails or phone calls. I have with the mayor, maybe one telephone call with Holly, I don't think I bill for that. So, it covers that, basic stuff, you know, if there's a, reviewing some of the ordinances, Craig grants, I'll generally review for that. If I have to draft an ordinance, you know, I, that's kind of like me, and I would, I would bill for that, so that would not be covered under the... It's in the theater.
Totally open to the feedback, from different categories, thoughts, whatever.
Jim, do you want to work on this?
Yeah. Do you want me to hold up, Jim, or should I?
Go ahead.
Another topic that was on the, my notes, was the amnesty program. We started out with 56 properties, $40,755, which was outstanding taxes, property, or waste and penalty, and interest collectible. And so, it was $40,275. Actually, as of today, would be a fair statement? This is what we collected?
No, that's the outstanding.
That's the outstanding. Okay.
Ten.
Ten, and...
And one.
Okay. So, as of today, of the $40,000, and the $40,000 included waste, penalty, and interest, so I should say penalty and interest, because if you take away the penalty and interest, it would have been $32,000, $33,000, because of the penalty and interest which was taken off. We've collected $11,300 of that number, so 30% of that number, that was 56 properties, 16 of the 56 paid in full. 21 of them, I'm going to write off, they're less than $100, some of them are $6. We're going to spend more than that in paperwork, just trying to send it to the lawyer. Two of them have started coming in and making payments. One of them owes, one of the largers of the group, came in and made a $1,000 payment towards me, several thousands of that they owe. So, oh, I didn't know you had extras, or, sorry.
Do you need more time?
Thanks, I appreciate it. So, it's the bottom line, with penalties and interest on the last properties of the 17, excuse me, that's not 17, I said 17, yes, 17 properties. We still need to... 17 properties left is actually 17, almost $18,000. Those will be handed over to Mr. McMertry to go ahead and start the process. And again, a lot of this stuff is just being thrown out, Jay, and we just, we just, today. So, questions, comments, thoughts, let us know, please. So, I think, I feel like this was successful, getting 30% of it upfront, plus we've got, it'll probably grow to more like 40 to 45% when the other two finish pan out. So, it was not something we really wanted to do, but at the same token, we get these people coming in to pay their members, so.
17 properties total, $18,000. Are there some in there that are much larger than others?
They range anywhere from $143 dollars up to, I would say, probably close to $2,000.
Okay. And the 21 you wrote off, they're all under $100?
Every one of them.
So, can we afford to go after somebody that owes us $143?
Well, as I said, there's no, by statute, you can recover attorney's fees in the process for certain litigation, so I'm not actually sending you a bill.
Yeah.
The bill will be collected if we're successful in the suit, in quant authorization of the court. So, can you do it? Yeah, I mean, it's not going to cost the city anything.
Do you want to do it? I mean, you're the one at risk on it, aren't you?
I'm not, yeah, I mean, for a hundred bucks, I'll let you know, I don't see why I wouldn't do it. I mean, you're still entitled to recover the fee, it's whether the city wants to go after somebody at $100 level.
Do you file a lien's all in some process, or is that, is that part of it?
No, that's part of it. You do have to file a lien, and it's got all those forms and everything, so Craig will sign those, and once we get those things, he'll file the liens, and then we can post it. That'll just take you shorter time. So, it's really up to the city council, you know, as a matter of policy, if you want to do that. If you want me to do it, I'll do it. If I, for some reason, I change my mind, I'll let you know, but I don't want to do it.
So, we would have to pay your legal fee?
No.
No, they do.
They do. The person who owes the taxes gets, unfortunately, so. Fortunately or unfortunately, I mean, it allows the city to collect its taxes without having to go out of pocket, so, whichever side of that argument you're on.
The taxes that were 2012 taxes, are they included in this number or excluded?
Included.
So, it's everything we have up through the current tax laws?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We've only got about three minutes. I'm going to try and do this within a couple minutes. I think that clock's off, so, actually, I've got five. I'm not sure if everybody's aware of this, but I did want to make sure everybody was. Is it last week already? The incident? Yes. Last Wednesday or Thursday, I believe it was, we had an incident in our city. It was, I'm going to tread softly, so bear with me, because I don't want to go there. We had somebody that needed help, and ultimately, what happened was, it entailed 13 other agencies coming into the city to help us. Police, we had two different organizations bring their dog in to help with the search. Hamilton County came in for a helicopter. They were here, I'm going to guess, at least two hours. The good part was, the person was found, he was taken to get help. I don't need to get into a lot of details, I don't, I know enough, but I don't know them all, and don't need to know them all, but it was incredible, rewarding from our standpoint, my standpoint personally, and I think we as a city, to know that when we have an issue, I mean, don't put this on the air, even the dog catcher, who wasn't on a call, showed up, and I saw him, I don't want to get the guy in trouble, is all, and I asked him, I said, are you helping with the search? He goes, yeah, he goes, I heard it, and he goes, I wasn't on a call, he goes, I thought I'd get another pair of eyes, which I thought was incredible. You know, I hope I'm not going to get the poor guy in trouble, but I don't think I would, but it was really nice to see, I mean, unbelievable, to my understanding, and I might miss somebody on the track. We had Fort, right, we had Love Loa, we had, of course, Erlanger, we had Hamilton County, we had Homeland Security, we had Hamilton County, we had a couple from Boone County come in, of course, our own team leading it. And I will say that I showed up on the scene hour or two into it, Jim, a specialist, Lindleman, was handling it. I think he was getting, right-hand person was Homeland Security or Emergency Management, Steve Hensley, was assisting me, and it was unbelievable how well it was handled. The chief was available, because he was involved in something else, he showed up on the scene, and everything was handled extremely well. But I thought it was, again, just nice to know that you have a resident that needs help, and all points came out from all over the place. Boone County, we've come over the lines, you know, and it was really nice. Just wanted to mention that, because I don't know how many people actually knew a whole lot about that, if at all. Most, you know, I showed up on the scene, I was the water point generator, I went to the store, stopped by the house and filled up a very big cooler, dropped it off, and let those people do their job, and they did a great job. Fire department, unbelievable what they did, unbelievable, up and down the hill, because it was on the hill going down to the river. Those guys went up and down that several times, and that is not easy terrain, and it'll tear you up, to say the least. But again, just want to say thank you to all those people. It was a great effort from everybody, and it's appreciated. We've got about a half a minute, that's a good time. That, I think we're close enough that I will actually go into recess, and of our caucus meeting, call to me, I want a motion to go into recess. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into recess, during the special meeting.
We'll make a motion to caucus recess.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I guess officially, I'm supposed to read this. Notice of a special meeting. The undersigned is, Mayor of City of Villa Hills hereby gives notice to all members of city council of said city. The special meeting of the council is scheduled for six thirty Wednesday, October ninth, two thousand and thirteen, at seven nineteen Rogers Road, Villa Hills, Kentucky. And then underneath it is my signature, as well as a place for all the council members to sign off on, so I'll pass this around. Notices were sent to the Kentucky Enquirer, the Community Reporter, two people at the Community Reporter, as well as TBMK. You just, again, pass that along. Now, opening the special meeting, and we have a couple things on the agenda today. I read the special meeting, now, now we're gonna have a discussion about two different ordinances. One of them is ordinance two thousand and thirteen dash twenty-three. We'll take care of that one first, because I think that one's gonna be a lot easier.
Okay, this is. Let me go ahead and do the first, do the reading of the ordinance, and then there's discussion.
Do you copy?
I emailed it to you, do you remember?
Twenty-three.
Unless my number was wrong. This has to do with imminent danger?
In that case, I give you my word of honor.
Sorry about that, I thought I had a copy for, I thought I'd email it to you.
So, as a resolve of fact, this is a, ordinance twenty thirteen dash twenty-three is being passed as an emergency. I'm gonna, this is, you can have one reading covered by law, so I'm gonna go ahead and have the first and only reading of ordinance twenty thirteen dash twenty-three. It is an ordinance amending chapter ninety-two of the city's municipal code by incorporating a process for summary abatement of property imminently dangerous to the health and safety of Villa Hills residents and declaring an emergency to exist. Whereas KRS three eight one point seven seven zero provides for the establishment of procedures for summarily abating imminently dangerous property. And whereas an emergency exists due to the presence of several nuisance properties in the city posing imminently dangerous threats to the adjacent properties and requiring prompt city action in order to protect the health and safety of the city residents, be ordained by the City of Villa Hills, Kentucky as follows. Section one, and amend section ninety-two of the city's municipal code as described above. Section two pursuant to KRS three eight one seven seventy, the city establishes a procedure for summary abatement of property imminently dangerous to the health and safety of Villa Hills. An imminently dangerous is defined as a condition which could cause serious or life-threatening injury or death at any time. And section four is any property condition which the city reasonably determines to be imminently dangerous to the health and safety of Villa Hills residents. May be summarily abated in accordance with the procedure set forth in the section. And then there are procedures in the statute which all track KRS three eight one seven seventy. And those procedures allow for the city to go in and provide notice, not to exceed five days, assuming it's an emergency situation. They would provide notice to the resident, and then if they're, you know, the resident can fix whatever the problem was, the city could go in and fix it on an emergency basis itself. And the statute then permits the city to charge those costs back to the property owner. Now, another important thing about this ordinance is, is that for it to pass, an emergency must be declared in two-thirds of the legislative body, not just the two-thirds of us, but they have to count the whole legislative body, has to vote in favor of this ordinance. I can give you the long history of why I think that is, but generally, we need the two-thirds vote. So, that is a reading and summary of ordinance twenty thirteen dash twenty-three.
Why this is on the agenda is because we've been informed by residents, as well as a code enforcement officer, that we do have a property or two, that we have trees that are dead and leaning, and are serious concerns on whether or not somebody's gonna get hurt if these things aren't taken down. Once they determine that it was a serious enough issue, that I felt like it's important enough to move this up to the table as quick as possible, so we have an ability to go take care of it. And that naturally will go through the right process, but if we went through the normal first reading, second reading, we could be into December or January by the time we got this thing done. And if there's an emergency, we need to get it done.
Don't we already have an ordinance?
No.
Abatement procedure?
Yeah, that's for nuisance, but it doesn't cover an emergency situation. So, it's just a different, the statutes provide for a different method to approach this. The other thing, again, looking at for the city's interest on why this procedure is better, is because it does define by statute what imminently dangerous is, and that International Property Maintenance Code doesn't really have imminently dangerous conditions in there. As well, the statute allows the city to, you know, take a lien for its expenses and to recover its attorney's fees if need be to recover the lien monies, which isn't provided for in the situation of a nuisance. It's only provided for where you have imminently dangerous condition. Does that answer your question?
If you would do this work?
The city or contractor could do the work.
It would be my, especially like with trees, for example. Cutting grass is one thing, taking down trees, I would actually look to have a contractor do it, somebody that's licensed and insured or whatever, because that way, if the tree falls on the fence, neighbor's fence, and takes the fence out, we don't have to worry about trying to fix the fence because public works or whomever. I would actually look to have a contractor, somebody outside the city, hears the bill, and that's the way I'd do that happening.
And then are we, like we do with the roads, are we gonna put out open bids that contractors can offer their services? Or are you just gonna pick somebody?
We will, we'll seek a couple bids, but if it's an imminent dangerous situation, we need to do it quick. If we put it out for bid, that could be, I don't know how long, but we definitely.
But I meant, like, they would be in a, like, system, you know, like, go ahead, we're gonna need a couple tree guys on the line, you know, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Well, first off, if, if, I think that the, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, the procurement policy, anything over twenty thousand dollars, you have to bid out.
I know.
If it were gonna be more than that, you have to bid out. Otherwise, we have our own procurement policy. We may need to amend that to provide for an emergency situation. But that's by executive order, so I think that's easily amended. If it's not a recovery, if it's just your standard two thousand dollars cut down a tree, I think the mayor has the authority to go ahead and do that, by the cities have adopted procurement policy that does comply with state law.
But yes, we would prefer to get bids, because then we're being also respectful to the homeowner when they go to pay that bill. We're not just shoving them a five thousand dollar bill down, take a four-foot pine tree down.
I guess when you say emergency, you think of, you know, how half of it fallen down.
It does, it does, the statute itself kind of addresses that, and this ordinance addresses it too, because the amount of notice you have to give is kind of dependent upon circumstances. No more than five days, conceivably, if you had a super emergency and something was gonna happen, like right now, you could probably take action, and whatever action you took would be justified. But if you can reasonably say, you know, let's put some yellow tape around this thing, and have the police drive by a little more frequently, and take a day to get bids to remove A or B, that's probably what you ought to do, but it's kind of a situational call as to how you do it.
Are we allowed to ask questions about that?
Not at this time. Afterwards, again, I'll entertain anything that you have to see if we can.
I'm just curious, I mean, obviously, this is just getting creeped up, but how long?
Last month and a half or so it's been brought to our attention, is that fair?
Correct. The code enforcement board, Mr. Crawford came to our August meeting and made a very big push to have this addressed due to some trees that were, had the possibility of falling from a property that has code enforcement issues. And then, you know, in the intervening time, you know, that situation's only worsened. And so this is, it was our effort to address those concerns.
So, it wasn't an emergency when you first brought it up?
Correct.
It wasn't known.
Right. Since the code enforcement officer seen it, we've had a resident come to the city, actually went to the code enforcement board meeting to address it with them as well. And then I think the code enforcement officer went out and evaluated it. Came to our, I think he came to our last council, maybe, didn't he? Maybe it was the council.
Jason?
Uh, no, Mr. Upman, did he miss, no, he didn't, no. But I've had conversations with him, that yes, he definitely feels that this needs to be addressed as soon as possible.
It seems like we've done this before. I mean, we've had problems with, with toll booths, that sort of thing. I don't have a problem with what we're trying to do, I just don't understand why we need a new ordinance to do it.
I don't think you have an ordinance to do it. So, you need one, that's, that's, that's why.
So, ninety-two doesn't do it?
No, it doesn't. Ninety-two does not provide the protections of that section of the KRS that relate to imminently dangerous condition. It provides for nuisance. So, there's, imminently dangerous condition is something that's gotta maybe, you know, be life-threatening or imminent danger to somebody, take a prostitute. Plus, this ordinance does provide for a better way to recoup the city's cost. That was kind of the question, how does the city recoup the cost, you know, of this? And this provides a better mechanism to recoup the cost of fixing an emergency situation. You know, I, to be honest, I don't, I don't know that a lot of people do have this. I think they all adopt that code. When we looked at that code, it really doesn't cover this imminently dangerous thing, well, down to the statute.
We've done it in the past, I don't, I mean, maybe we weren't doing it right, but I know we've done it in the past, so.
The other question is, if we've done it in the past, have we recouped our cost? I don't know. Other comments? Questions? With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
We'll call it, please. Ms. Boston?
Yes.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Eisenhower?
Yes.
Ms., can I hear it? Mr. Wisher?
Yes.
Mr. Van?
Yes.
Motion carries. Very much. And then the next one, the special meeting would be the second reading of the franchise meeting agreement.
I'm gonna go ahead and do the second reading and summary, and then the discussion can proceed from there. This is ordinance number twenty thirteen dash twenty-two. It's the second reading of ordinance twenty thirteen dash twenty-two, which is an ordinance of the City of Villa Hills, Kentucky, establishing a franchise for the use on public streets, alleys, and other public grounds in the city for the transmission and distribution of either or both natural gas and electricity through and for consumption of the city, and providing the terms thereof. And again, I read this in more detail yesterday's, I mean, the la, the last meeting, but I will, you know, try to provide a summary. Basically, it provides for a three percent charge on top of, you know, the Duke energy charges. So, if you have gas and electric, you know, a hundred dollars, there's gonna be a three-dollar charge on top of that, and that money will go, you know, to the city for its use. It sets, this condition sets the terms and conditions by which Duke can operate in the city. It provides more defined, a more defined relationship than Duke currently exists between Duke and the city, requiring that Duke, when it does work within the city, return to work to a condition as good or better than it was before, which is a protection that I think is offered that is more substantial than the current statutory protections. This agreement will go for ten years. It provides that Duke will indemnify the city from any of its conduct. So, it seems that it's a, you know, pretty reasonable on those terms with regard to the indemnity and the protections and the fact that Duke has to return to work. I did speak with counsel for Duke, who said that David Sanford, who's a law firm in Lexington, he said that, that the three percent fee is, in his view, reasonable under the law. I also did research on the statute, which authorizes the city to enter into this. And I believe as well, my opinion is that a three percent fee is, would be considered by the courts to be reasonable if the city chose to pass that. So, that's a, the first reading and summary of ordinance, the second reading and summary of ordinance twenty thirteen dash twenty-two.
First question I have is, do we have to do this tonight? There's not been, there's not been any serious discussion on this body about it. We haven't had the opportunity to have public comment. It's a complicated matter, and, you know, does waiting two weeks get us out of the wind? I know we've targeted trying to do something with the vehicle tax by the end of the calendar year, that makes sense. But to cram this thing through without the full body even discussing it to hear concerns, and I think we probably know where a lot of people stand on this, but I think everybody's opinion should be heard, especially the folks in, in the city. If it can wait, if it can wait until the general council meeting, then I would make a motion that we're gonna, that we table it. But I need to know where we stand, timing.
Before you make that motion to table, I asked to verify the response, since I have the information that's relevant, and then we can look about how you table, or I guess you can move to table in the middle of discussion. But the fact is, is that the reason I recommended, after discussion with the attorney for Duke and trying to meet the city's guideline, that I, as I understood it to be, to try to get the settlement by the end of the year, considering that Duke then has to take this to the Public Service Commission all at their expense, and get it all passed and through the process. You know, we discussed that ideally, it would be sooner rather than later. I think technically speaking, pursuant to my discussions with counsel for Duke, that if we did pass it up in two weeks, that that would still leave you enough time. But, you know, as things go in the law, you run into unexpected roadblocks. So, trying to, having my first goal meeting, the city's stated deadline at the end of the year, that's why I suggested that we go ahead and put it up now. So, I didn't intend it to be a cram down or anything.
No, no, I understand, and I appreciate that explanation, but, you know, I envision, as we move down the path of this thing, that we would have some opportunity for public comment, at least discussion as a group together. We had some people working on this, you know, as a subcommittee, and there were lots of ideas tossed around. You know, I, for one, would like to hear from, you know, I know how I feel about it, consider, you know, the businesses and the impact on, on the folks that currently have the public position. We're trying to find balance here, and find an equitable way to collect funds for roads. This ordinance, as it's currently written, doesn't restrict the funds either, and I have a problem with that. So, I don't know if, 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 I'd like to see it restricted by ordinance, if that constitutes a new first read, if we make that change. But again, the whole purpose of going down this path was to, the vehicle sticker fee, which are restricted, currently restricted funds, it would be my vision that any replacement be equally restricted to roads only. So, I think there's still a lot to discuss in terms of where we're heading with this. And again, if we go to the council meeting, I would ask mayor, I would ask the police, the chairman, public comment to more than five folks, and let's, you know, give everybody the opportunity. Without spending six hours here, give, you know, a fair sample, the opportunity, come and dress the body, and then we can discuss it, and that's really what I think.
Yeah, I agree. I don't see why, two weeks is not gonna, I don't think make a difference. And I would like to hear what the citizens have to say about this.
Well, and I thought we had agreed at another meeting that we weren't gonna make decisions or take votes at a caucus meeting either.
We made one. This is a special meeting.
Oh, this is a special meeting.
That's worse.
Excuse me? We will not have comments from the back.
Throw them out.
If he continues, I will.
But you already know my feelings about it.
You're absolutely right, we have.
Fossil fuel went up thirteen percent this year. So, and we're, this is what, we're locked into this for ten years. I mean, anything can happen, I just think you're putting too much, too many people at risk.
And that's your opinion, and I understand it, respect that. Around the table, do we wanna go ahead and table this until the regular council meeting?
Yes.
I'll, I'll put it in the form of a motion, I'll make a motion, we table this discussion till the next council meeting. But that, I guess, before I do that, my question on.
I'm trying to find it.
Yeah, so you gotta find it. My question is, if we want to put to the ordinance, the road restriction, does that, where does that put us?
If, let me ask you this question, I'll throw it out in reply to that question, if you don't mind. If, in order not to delay this, we can actually have a first reading at, in two weeks from now.
See, you're in a hurry about it, we're not.
No, 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 no. This has nothing to do with being in a hurry. In two weeks, we can have an ordinance which restricts the money for this.
Separate.
We'd have a separate ordinance, so we don't.
You know, the end of the year timing makes it all clean, in terms of getting rid of one and bringing on another. So, I can, I appreciate the, you know, that sense of urgency about it, but again, I think everybody knows where I stand on the vehicle sticker fee, there, there needs to be a better way, there needs to be more equitable way. I'm not happy that there's people that don't pay their share, and we have to find a better way. But we also, I do wanna hear from the residents on this.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
It does affect everybody. It affects the businesses, it affects the nuns, it affects the schools. I get that, I do, I get that.
Back to your point, I think, so we don't derail this for a month or longer, we can actually have another ordinance that says this money would be restricted as a separate ordinance, and we have a first reading next two weeks.
Is there anything else we wanna include in the ordinance? I, I really, I'm, it's not gonna go. I want the restriction in there.
I agree. I think it should be, if we do that.
And should we have something in there that states that the vehicle tax will not?
Yes, and that we are, that, I, I, separate.
So, in the separate ordinance, I think we can do that. I don't, we can't put that in this agreement with Duke.
Agreed, but.
Yes, we can put that in.
The whole premise behind going down this path was that the other one goes away. And I didn't see, there's no tying of that at this point, all this, you know, we, so.
There, there doesn't need, I mean, if you tell the residents.
No, I get that, but if I'm telling residents, I'm putting this thing to get rid of another one.
You wanna shoot.
I wanna show an objection on something that, that the other one's going away.
I agree, I agree with that. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to change a couple ordinances anyway, or actually end those ordinances anyway that put it in place to begin with. So, we can do that, and.
I think there's, needs to be some more detail here, and certainly some opinion and discussion, so.
And do we know if it's gonna make more, generate more revenue?
No, will not. It will generate less.
Then why would we do that?
It will actually generate less, because this is not, we're not doing this to increase taxes. We're doing this to save the vehicle sticker fee. It, it saves processing, it saves a lot of legal bills. a lot of legal bills. If in fact, we decide that we want to keep the vehicle sticker fee and not do this, you will see legal bills go high up extremely. Because I have not asked Mr. Mercury to start suing the people that are not paying. I think we have to. If we do not do that, everybody will quit paying it, period, because we don't do anything about it.
Then why don't we go back to maybe a $20 sticker fee? It went from $8 to 40. No wonder people don't wanna pay that. I mean, $40 is too much. Maybe we cut it in half and draw money from other areas that we, uh, change.
If the vehicle sticker fee doesn't go away, we will not, it will increase costs in other areas, potentially. I can assure you of that.
It'll cost, in what way?
First of all, again, legal. That's a simple one. That's the biggest one.
You're gonna sue somebody over $20?
Absolutely. And I'm gonna tell you why. Because if you don't make a stance, nobody will pay that $20.
Don't you think more people would be likely to pay it at a more reasonable fee? Because $40, I think, we're the highest around.
We're not the highest. There's other cities that are, we also, I believe.
Because that's what they told me in Kent County. And they told me, since I was council, I should get mine free.
Yeah, go there.
A motion to postpone to a definite time.
Postpone to a definite time?
Definite time.
To a definite time?
Next meeting. If you do it now, then that'll stop the discussion, if you want to continue the discussion. But you can do it before a vote.
How's that tie into the changes that we need to make?
You could make a motion to amend the ordinance, and then have, that probably, voted on it at the next meeting. I think that would be sufficient.
I don't think you can amend this, because this is the franchise agreement. Now, what you want to do is, we will create a new ordinance with this by next meeting, is what I'm saying. It'll be a second, separate ordinance.
This is what we want. I just, I propose that we end discussion right now and postpone discussion to our regular council meeting two weeks from now.
So yes, a motion to postpone at this time, and then you have to call the question on that motion and vote.
Yep. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And?
Take a roll call.
Roll call?
Mr. Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Eisenhower?
I'm saying yes to postpone.
Yes. Mr. Wisher?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Ms. Ballson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are gonna have to talk about this at some time. I mean, this council needs to discuss this. I understand why, I understand your motion, but to come off discussion at the council doesn't make any sense.
We're missing a councilman, who's an integral part of this thing too. So we can't have a five, six discussion. I want the whole body here. That's my opinion, anyway. Mayor needs to be here.
No. Let me back up, just to give you another avenue, if you'd like to. We can bring this back up in caucus. But from a special meeting standpoint, now that we've tabled this or moved it to another, I have to get out of it. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
But if we go back in caucus and we talk about it, and just roundtable more, which is fine, because I think that's what these meetings are about.
Go for a journey, special meeting.
Second.
All in favor? That was, that was, thank you.
I'd like to ask a question, very popular, do you?
Typically not, no, sir. I'm writing down, I can try and ask, you know, a few years ago, I'll give you a pay term festival. I mean, I'm doing more than willing, I, I really don't have more, I just-
I think two, $20 bill.
Thanks, great. That way you can read her, keep her thoughts. By the way, I would like to now call back the caucus meeting back order. I'll think we'll just do that. I was on a roll, so I'll keep where I was going, if you guys don't mind, we'll come back to do this thing. Jim, another thing you had mentioned about the August financials.